The School District Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Kozar. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Vorthman up to the podium, who has led the efforts for the new calendar for the 1920 school year, and has worked with committees and also with our communications department. So, Dr. Vorthman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, just to, wanted to summarize a few key points from the proposed 1920 calendar that was in your board packet this week and available for the public hearing tonight. We're proposing that the calendar for the 1920 school year consists of 180 days of instruction. And we will start on the 27th of August. If you recall, the state law requires us to start no earlier than the week, the 23rd of, the week in which the 23rd falls, or the 23rd. So, we could have started either the 23rd. We believe that a Friday start was probably not the best, since we have some experience doing that a few years ago. And due to our early out schedule on Mondays, we believe that probably was not a very good way to start the school year. So, we're proposing that we start on the 27th. We would have two parent-teacher conference trade days like we currently do. One would be the 25th of October, which would be about halfway through the first semester. And then, the 20th of March, which would be about halfway through the second semester. Thanksgiving break would continue to be, is a current, similar to the current calendar, starting on Wednesday through Thursday and Friday of that week. Have about a week and a half at Christmas time for winter break. We would come back on the 2nd of January. And the first semester would conclude on the 17th of January. Students would be off on the 20th for the Martin Luther King holiday, and they would start back on second semester on the 21st of January. There would be a student vacation day on the 17th of February. And a spring break would be the 9th through the 13th of April. We would have graduation the last weekend in May, which would be the 22nd and 23rd. And then, or second to last weekend in May. And then, we would conclude the school year and the second semester on the 28th of May. So, kids would be home before the end of May. That's our proposal at this time. If there are any questions, I would welcome them. We plan to bring this to the board for their consideration at the last meeting in November.
Any questions from board members?
I guess just curious if, I don't know, graduation on Memorial Day weekend cause any heartburn for any folks?
Well, we'll find out after this year.
I know.
We did a survey though.
Yeah, we did a survey, if you recall, last year we did a survey. Had about 1,800 respondents, about 900 staff members and 900 parents. We asked that, and virtually were indifferent whether we had a Friday or a Saturday. So, we'll give it a try for this year and see how it goes on with the Friday/Saturday. I think having it the Friday/Saturday, if folks want to head on a town, they would be welcome to do so by noon on Saturday. So, shouldn't be much of a problem.
Any other questions from the board? If not, anybody in the audience who wishes to comment on the school calendar, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close this public hearing. And now, we will open this regular board meeting for the Council of West Community School District Board of Directors. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Minshaw?
Present.
Mr. Grove?
Present.
Mr. Arthur?
Present.
Mr. McGlade?
Present.
Mr. LaFerla?
Present.
Mr. Gazire?
Present.
Now, as you are able, would you please rise with me to observe a moment of silence, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before us now, we have the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. And the motion to approve the agenda has passed. Before us now is the approval of our minutes of, from the closed session and our regular business meeting of October 23rd, 2018. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the minutes of the closed session and the regular business meeting of October 23rd.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Before us now is the approval of our board minutes from the closed session and regular business meeting of October 23rd, 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. And our motion to approve the minutes has passed. Before us now is the time for public participation. Anybody who wishes to address the board regarding agenda items or anything of their concern can address us at the podium at this time. Okay, we'll move forward next then with our superintendent's report. Dr. Murillo, would you lead us in this portion of the meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Kozar. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Diane Ostrowski to the podium. Ms. Diane will, is here to represent and celebrate with us American Education Week, and she will introduce our guest.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there. So, then, National Education Association annually hosts a American Education Week. And so, it's an opportunity for public school districts across the country to celebrate and appreciate all of those who are dedicating themselves to education, including all those who work in the school district, those who serve in leadership roles, and those who volunteer with schools. So, tonight, in our community, we're glad to have Mayor Matt Walsh here to proclaim this week as American Education Week. Mayor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks Diane, and thanks for allowing me to come to recognize the good work of the staff of the Council of West Community School District and the importance of the entire community and the education of our children. So, this is the City of Council of West, Iowa, Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas, education provides young people with the knowledge, experiences, and confidence they need to have a productive future and contribute to society. And our community can be proud of all school district staff members who work tirelessly to serve our children in safe, collaborative, and innovative schools. And whereas, the Council of West Community School District partners with parents, organizations, and businesses to provide more choices and more opportunities for the young people in our community. And schools are community centers, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials for one common purpose. And whereas, American Education Week, now in its 95th year, provides the opportunity to celebrate our local school districts and thank individuals who are making a difference by ensuring that every child can achieve more and receive a quality education. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council of West, do hereby proclaim, November 12th through the 16th of 2018, as 2018 American Education Week. Reach, Educate, Inspire. In the City of Council of West, Iowa, and I further encourage all citizens to demonstrate pride in our schools and value the contributions education makes to vitality of the entire community. With the seal of the City of Council of West, I do hereby proclaim, thank you as board members for all you do for the educational process, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Walsh, and thank you, Ms. Ostrowski, for putting this evening together. At this time, we'd like to move on to our next item on the Student Achievement Report, and that is the Fall 2018 FAST reading and math results. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr., Dr. Corey Vorthman to join us again at the podium to take us through the data. And I think we will have some pretty good news to share with the progress that we're making. Dr. Vorthman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, we do have some good news to share tonight about our literacy and math fall assessment scores. So, just wanted to provide a little bit of background before we dig into the data. The Formative Assessment System for Teachers, or FAST, as it's referred to, is a universal screener. And that means that it's designed to cast a broad net to identify students who might be having difficulty that would require them to need some type of intervention. And this, for, in terms of literacy, this was mandated by the early literacy legislation that was passed by the General Assembly three years ago. This year, we had a couple of changes. One was, we are using a different screener for comprehension, still part of the FAST suite. But the state allows us to choose either, what's called either a reading, a reading, or CBMR. There are two measures, both have composite scores, both used the same way. The one requires less teacher time for it to be administered. Students can actually use it on the computer and it's self-guided. And so, we chose to use that screener this year. They're scaled exactly the same way. Composite scores are developed exactly the same way. So, there really is no difference between them, except for how the students interact with the assessment. And so, for this year, the students in grades two through six read a short passage. Instead of having to read the number of words correctly, they had to answer multiple choice questions about the comprehension of that exact passage. In terms of the assessment in, for students in grades kindergarten and first grade, there were no changes. They were the, it was the exact same assessment. Called early reading, that was given in previous years. So, in terms of our results for this year, we are, what we're looking at is the number of students who are considered either low risk or high risk. And the students that are considered low risk would consider, would be all the kids who are low risk, no risk at all, and are on what's called the college pathway. So, those four buckets of scores fall into this category of low risk. And so, what we would like to see is this number climbing every year. We see more and more kids that are at low or no risk at all. And we had some very good scores, as you can see there up on the screen, that we made increases in almost every single, we did make increases in every single grade level. Our biggest jump was at fourth grade, from 48% at low risk last year to 67% at low risk this year. That also includes, when you look at the cohort data, so, we're looking at a similar group of kids, so, last year's third graders to this year's fourth graders, this year's fourth grade, or last year's fourth graders, this year's fifth graders. We saw a decrease at every level except for one to two, which, this is a really big celebration. It's what we've been working for, hoping that we would see that we would start to move the needle a little bit on the percentage of our students needing additional help and support. And so, we were really happy, especially in our kindergarten to first grade, where we had put a lot of extra supports, where we saw a 22% decrease in cohort data from the previous year. So, that's really good news. This is the first year that we will have given the math counterpart to the literacy assessment. Where do we do this voluntarily? It's to provide us data to know who we need to be intervening with in terms of mathematics. We piloted it last spring. It was the first time we'd given that assessment. So, this will be our first full year of implementation. And so, you can see from our spring to fall, our first data points, we are making some progress. Two through five is our, kind of our biggest jump, from 52 to 68% low risk. That means we're starting to get closer and closer to that magic 80%, where we really want to be. So, kind of some responses that we have to this data. One is, we've got some great analysis from Lexia that shows that the, for students who meet the number of minutes that are prescribed by Lexia and are working at grade level or at nearing grade level materials, they about, between 80 and 90% of those students will meet proficiency by the end of the year. So, we know that that's a good way for us to intervene with students early and use this data to help provide additional supports for students in the classroom. We're also looking this year at wrapping around the teacher-led lessons that go along with them. So, as the computer diagnoses the needs of the student, it also circles back and tells the teacher that Johnny may need an extra lesson in blending and segmenting or multi-syllabic words, or, so, we're really trying to focus more attention on making sure that we kind of complete that puzzle so that students get both the access to the intervention with Lexia Core 5, but also that the teacher's able to follow up with them as needed. And then, lastly, continuing to provide that targeted intervention for at-risk and low-risk students. Just as a reminder, the percentage of students who are, would be considered at-risk or high-risk, that also includes any of our students who've not yet mastered our English language, so, that's all of our English language learners, as well as students who have a specific learning disability and have an IEP for reading or math. So, I wanted to make sure you knew that those were included in there as well. So, at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them about our Fall FAST results.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so, on the, the math component of the FAST testing, you said that we had a, it was a pilot segment of the students. So, are we just comparing the students that had taken it to the students after the next year when they took it again? Or are we comparing overall students to just the students that took it that?
Yeah, it's, we actually, we did a pilot with a small group of students in winter, and then, we did a full-scale pilot in the spring.
Okay, so, they all had, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure we.
Yep.
What's the, I missed that. What's the cost, just the district to run FAST screening, just in general, annually?
Yeah, the literacy does not cost us anything. It's supplied by the state of Iowa, although we have heard that that may be changing in the near future, that they may be passing that cost on to school districts. And then, the math screener costs $3, but through a consortium agreement we have with AEA, we only pay half of that price. So, it's about a dollar and a half. Correct, yeah. Very reasonable for a screener.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just have one. When we look at the interventions, are those interventions in the classroom? Or are they in pull-out sessions as well? Both, okay?
Yeah, so, depending on the needs of the student, the intervention intensifies. So, those students who, if you look, go back to the literacy one, those students who are not meeting grade level or are showing that there's some risk to them, we start with a tier one. That means something that all kids get in a classroom. And that would be, like I said, Lexia Core 5. Then, if students are still resistant to the intervention or need additional support, then we have highly-trained reading interventionists, or if they are an IEP, a special education teacher that provides small group or one-on-one specifically-designed instruction for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Vorthman. We're pretty excited about seeing that nose up and continuing to climb. And I am excited also to say that soon and very soon, we'll have our NWEA fall assessment data to share with you also. At this time, we have the informational presentations, and I'd like to invite Mr. Dean Wilson to the podium. He will introduce our guests tonight, who will walk you through the 2017 audit report. Mr. Wilson, the floor is yours.
Tonight is the presentation of the Board of the Annual Audit Report. The Finance Committee, which Chris and Kyle and John are actually on, have heard this presentation, at least from my point of view. Now, you're going to hear it from the auditors' point of view. So, the next, I don't know, seven, eight hours, you'll be just inundated with finance information here. So, I'd like to introduce Justin Hope. Justin was, is the manager on our job. Last two years, we've had Brian Green. Brian is actually in, I believe, New York at a GASB Government Accounting Standards Board Advisory Meeting, which he's on that board every year. And they're making these great rules for us to live by for governmental accounting. So, Justin, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm going to cook through this pretty quick. So, if you have questions, please interrupt and ask away. I live in this world, so, it makes a bunch of sense to me, as I suppose as anyone, and Dean. And so, just interrupt with questions as we get going. So, tip ahead a few. So, the deliverables for the audit, which I think the board will discuss approving at your next meeting in a couple of weeks, you'll have an audit report and a report to the Board of Education. In that board, report to the Board of Education, we talk about communication of matters related to the audit. Talks about the standards we use when we perform our audit and our responsibility under those standards as to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute. Can't look at every transaction. And so, it's risk-based and sampling and following some theories along that line. The end result of that is our independent auditor's report. We had an unmodified opinion, we call it a clean opinion, which is the best result you can get. Communication of significant matters, we look at the accounting practices of the district. There was a change, or actually, it was an adoption of a new accounting policy, GASB Statement 75, related to other post-employment benefits, which we have a slide on this in a little bit. We'll dive in that a little bit farther. We look for any significant or unusual transactions. We had none noted. And we review any alternative treatments that we discussed with management. There were none this year. Management's following the most appropriate set of policies and procedures to do their financial accounting. A lot of our audit time is spent on management's judgments and estimates. This is where management has the ability to influence the results of the financial statements. It's for depreciation, the useful life of your assets is an estimate. Accrued expenses, certain of those are also estimates, IBNR and health insurance, things like that. And the fair value of your investments is also subject to some estimation. We had no changes or no issues. Those all were through the estimation process. There were a few audit adjustments, five, including one provided by Mr. Wilson as we went through the process. Cash cutoff-related one, one to record the GASB 75, which was new this year. Small adjustment with GASB 68, which is the pension liability. And then, one from Dean to correct which funds some expenses belonged and they're just kind of shuffling from one fund to the other. No major concerns from my seat in terms of things that raised any red flags as to why we were having this kind of entry there. Couple of them are sort of repeat-type things that, in addition of our preparing GAAP and GASB standard financial statements that doesn't entirely happen during the year. It's kind of a sort of final reporting piece of it. So, no, no concerns from my seat. There was one past audit adjustment, which you'll see sometimes called an uncorrected statement. These are things we identify that aren't entirely correct, but they're not so significant that they need correction in the financial statements. One related to asset valuation. Some other items and things that we would communicate to the board here. No disagreements with management. Management didn't go consult outside accountants or other accountants looking for a different answer or one more favorable. No issues discussed prior to retention. And those are the things that we're going to work with through this process and very forthcoming. And we know it's a lot of work for us to come and bother and ask questions and we'll support. So, we appreciate all of, all the cooperation and help in that regard. There's also a representation letter that we'll get together with Mr. Wilson after the board has approved the audit. Kind of lays out who's responsible for which in this whole process. And then, also, you see a page with our quality review from our firm processes. No reportable matters, which is also a good result here. These would be findings related to your single audit and your federal dollars. We had none. Internal control-related matters, we did have a minor, a sort of a low-level, just control deficiency related to the cash cutoff process. There was an adjusting entry in that area. We've discussed it with Mr. Wilson. He's looking into correcting that process going forward. And then, there are also some management suggestions, different things. There are a handful of new GASB accounting standards coming down the line. Most of them won't have a major impact, but we're aware of them. We're out in front of them. We're, we're working with Lexia to make sure the district's ready to implement those. In the audited financial statements, which I believe you've had copies of, pages two and three are the opinion pages. Again, the unmodified or the clean audit opinion, the best result. And then, just some highlights, some other nighttime reading if you're having trouble sleeping and, and different information, important things you might want to look at. Reporting entity, Note 1A, talks about what's in the financial statements, what's not in the financial statements. Other footnotes related to the bond and the pension. There's a bunch of RSI, which is Required Supplementary Information. These are budgetary schedules, schedules related to pensions and so on. And then, some combining fund statements. The second from the last bullet point here is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. These are all of the federal grants that the district participates in. Shows the different size of those grants in relation to each other. Get about $9.9 million in federal awards during the 17, 18 year. If I can find my notes. That's an increase from about seven and a half when we first started doing this audit. Major programs, excuse me, this year, we select a rotating pool of programs so that over time, most of the major programs get selected. At the district this year, it was Title I, 21st Century Learning Center Grants. Doing again, good results from those. Those two grants covered about 39% of your total federal. GASB 68 is not new this year, but it's certainly a very large number. And the slide here, thing I want to focus on is the sensitivity analysis. You've got a $59.9 million share of the IPR's overall liability. That represents about nine tenths of 1% of the total underfunded piece of IPRs. And you can see, last year, you had about eight tenths of a percent. So, it's a, it's a function of payroll. As the district's payroll grows in relation to other participants in that plan, your proportionate share grows. In 2015, when GASB 68 was implemented, you had a $33.7 million pension liability. And you're sitting here at almost $60 million this year. It's not a function of anything the district is doing. It's sort of total push-down from the results of IPRs, their investment returns, changes in rate of return assumptions, participant mortality, different things like that. Big actuarial study that happens every year. Get this information. So, it's not anything really that you can control in terms of managing what that $59 million number looks like next year, whether it goes up, whether it goes down. The actuaries for IPRs continue to do that study. You can see your contribution rates in 2008 to IPRs were 6% and you've got almost 9% now. They're addressing that through increased funding by participants and different things like that. About $6.6 million of total IPRs contributions from the district in 2015. And this is just kind of a little informational, overall state pension funding. A lot of red and a lot of really red. Some states are in pretty terrible positions. Iowa's sort of in the middle. That is a couple of years old, so, you're sitting about 82% funded in IPRs, which 80 is kind of conservative. The new standard we adopted this year, GASB 75, and this is related to other post-employment benefits. This is for retiree health coverage between retirement age and Medicare. So, currently, if I'm an employee of the district and I retire at 55, So currently, if I'm an employee of the district and I retire, um, at 55, I have a tenure window where I can continue to pay full boat, full premium for the district's insurance coverage and remain on that plan until I'm Medicare eligible. But what that does is it creates an implied subsidy to the retirees. So as a retiree, your health benefits would cost more, um, than, let's say, a first-year teacher, um, age factors and different things like that. And so you're, in effect, subsidizing that retiree's cost. And so there's an actuarial study, you can see some of the assumptions, um, above, and, uh, that actuarial study came back, we get about a $5.9 million liability. I think the last bullet point on this slide is the most important one, OPEB is a, is a pay-as-you-go. You pay for your health insurance as you go. It's not that you're going to write a check for that liability, um, it's sort of, uh, to indicate the future costs that could occur to the district as a result of the way this health insurance plan works. This is something that would have happened at, at all the districts across the state, it's not unique to council bluffs, but it is new, uh, in terms of the account. The last few slides here, um, just illustrate some trend data over the last five years, um, it's about a 15% increase, uh, overall in your governmental fund revenue. Uh, 134 million in governmental expenditures, this is a 17% increase, and we'll see in a couple of slides, kind of, um, both of that. Bonded debt, 59 million, um, compared to 72 a few years ago, so you're doing a good jab in there. Unassigned fund balance as a percent of expenditure, so if you wanna think of this as sort of your reserve, um, for future spending. And so you saw revenue grew at 15% and expenses at 17, kind of drew down, uh, a little bit of your reserve and have been kind of hovering down a little bit. General fund revenue, this general fund is where most of the operations of the district happen, um, revenue there is a, another 15% increase. General fund expenditures, 16%, so again, that's kind of affected that drawdown of your fund balance. But they do match fairly closely between 117.2, uh, revenues and 117.3 expenditures. Uh, and here again, this is just putting a balance from a couple of slides. Schedule of expenditures of federal awards, these are all of the grants, Title I and, uh, the nutrition program, so on, here 7.5 million to 9.9. Um, the major grants in there, Title I, um, 2.8 million, that's about a 13% increase over those five years. 21st Century is about a million dollars, and the nutrition program is the largest, uh, at about 4.6 million dollars overall, so that's about half of, about half of your total federal awards. Uh, and then just some historical levy, uh, information as it compares to valuation. Enrollment hovering, um, around that 9,100 mark. Happy to take any questions or?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Grove?
I always like to ask, so there's nothing in this report that I saw that we should be worried about? Would you concur?
I would agree.
We're sitting pretty good shape.
I think so.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson.
Any other questions? Okay, well, between now and, and the time in which we, um, vote on receiving the audit, uh, if you have any questions, uh, just jot them down and we can ask them when we address this, um, in a resolution. So, thank you, Mr. Hope.
Thank you. And I also would like to congratulate Mr. Wilson on a job well done and the work that he does. He does work hard, he does stay on top of things, and he does, I see him moving about every day, uh, following up with everyone, and I really appreciate the work that you do, Mr. Wilson. I know sometimes we don't say that enough, so thank you. At this time, I would like to invite, um, Mr. Fringer and Mr. Hamilton to the podium. They are going to, uh, provide for us, uh, the 2018 enrollment report. We're doing it a little bit differently this year than we've done it in the past, and, um, I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback and, um, and, uh, believe that we have a, a good positive, um, enrollment report to talk with you about tonight. So Doc, uh, Mr. Fringer, the floor is yours.
Hmm, who is gonna help? I was just wondering that myself.
Would you like to use your call a friend, uh, card?
Mr. Wilson, you're so good at everything.
I am gonna have to go with a Plan B. The cast for the boardroom TV is not showing up, so I'm gonna just really quickly restart my computer.
You can just present it from memory, can't you?
I pretty much, I can come pretty darn close to presenting it by memory. Yep, that's what we're gonna do.
I said, we, we, we did practice, so we know that it worked.
Always have to come.
This was honestly not the part we were nervous about.
Yes.
And I, I hope you all enjoyed that very much. Um, I'm, I'm Dave Fringer, and Tim Hamilton and I are gonna tag-team this together. Uh, this report is the 2018-19 Certified Enrollment Report. This is something we do annually, and the reason why we're here together is because the technology and Student and Family Services Departments, uh, share responsibility for collecting and, and, uh, reporting this data. Kudos to John McGreevy and the systems team that, that do a lot of heavy lifting about data quality, and also to Robin Lukey, who takes care of all of our open-in, open-out students, and we have good news in that area this year. Yeah, how do I do that?
All right, we're getting there.
So, the certified enrollment is a financial count, it is not necessarily just a count of bodies, it's also a count of conditions of enrollment, including, uh, our own resident students that choose to attend school in other districts, uh, non-public and shared-time students who choose to come here for a part of their day, and that includes homeschool students who dual-enroll for a portion of their school day, uh, non-resident public students who come here for PSEO classes, um, career and technical education, those kinds of things, um, are included in the certified enrollment, as is the statewide voluntary preschool. And as you know, one preschool student is only worth .5 on count, uh, which is why this is, um, not a body count, it's a financial count. And then we also receive extra waiting for limited English proficient students based on, uh, the amount of time that they've been in the school districts, so that helps us pay for those services. The number I'm gonna draw your attention to, and by the way, you had a comprehensive report in your board packet that included a lot more information than we're gonna share tonight, we're gonna share some, some of the details and then also some good news from the count. Line seven, sometimes known as the money line in certified enrollment, is down 70.88. That's, um, that's a decrease from last year, but if you remember, last year at this time, I stood here and told you that we were down 130 students from the preceding year, so we have decreased, our decrease by just about half, um, this year. The, uh, historical trend over, uh, over the last 19 years, starting in 2000, uh, you can see the steady downward trend from 2000 through about 1112, where we bottomed out at 8944 students. Um, in the, in the succeeding years, we've had a steady increase, um, headed back up over the 9,000 mark, and, uh, just the past couple of years, last year's decrease of 130, and then this, this year's decrease of 70. The other line I'll draw your attention to, and this is where the good news starts, is line 11. It is a line that is most closely related to a body count in the financial count, and you'll notice that we're only down 40.8 on that line, and the reason for that is some good news in terms of open enrollment out and open enrollment into the district, and also a nice-sized kindergarten class this year. So we agreed that Tim would share the good news after I shared the, the concerning news with you, so here's Tim.
I, I think it's important to remember when we talk about enrollment, um, you all know this, but we're landlocked, we're surrounded by districts and we have a river that separates us from Nebraska, so trying to grow enrollment is really hard from within our own, um, boundaries, 'cause there's not a lot of new homes going up. And so, um, I think the work that we've done, really that Diana Strasky's Communications Department did the last year with just getting information out about our district, um, the good things that we're doing, the more choices, more opportunities, uh, hashtag achieve more, um, has really helped us. And then when we looked at, um, open enrollment, we know if we can get the kids to come here, that we, we, we have a better chance of keeping them here. If they leave to go to another district, it's really hard to get them to come back. They form relationships, they get to know the staff at, at, at buildings, they get to know the principal. So we really targeted, uh, our kindergarten roundup, and you probably remember when Diane was presenting this to you back in the spring and talking about kindergarten, um, enroll, uh, kindergarten roundup, all the schools, if you went and buy them, you saw the signs out there, you saw pictures of kids, all of the great things that we did to really get kids to come to our school. See for yourself, you may remember. So, when you look at, um, this line, you look at the resident public school attending other, other schools. So, on the left side, you see the 2018-19 number compared to 2017-18. You'll see that that is down 14.8 students. So 14.8 students, um, fewer have open enrolled out to other districts. You can see a trend, uh, from 2000, 2001, our open enrollment out numbers went up every year. The last two years, I'm happy to report that our numbers are, are down almost 50 students. So almost 50 fewer students the last two years are choosing to open enroll out of our district. The number's still way higher than we'd like it to be, but we're, we're chipping away at This is 16, um, 16 students change from 2000, again, the left is 2008, 18, 19, the right is 2017, 18. Um, these are students open enrolled into us. So kids who have filled out the paperwork to come into us, we have 16 more students this year open enrolled in, so from other school districts choosing to come here. This too, if you look at the trend the last few years, 265 students choose to open enroll or tuition into us. That's the highest it's ever been. So I think, if, just looking at the trend, there's some really good news here of things that are going on in the district the last couple of years. So again, we go back to kindergarten, gonna give you a second to look at, these are our students. They're here now, they're, they're, they're grown up, they're with us, they think that they know everything. If, if any of you remember your kindergartners, uh, yeah, they've, they already got it figured out, right? It's November. So when you look at our kindergarten enrollment, it's up and down every year, it's really, it's, you cannot pattern something like this. Again, we're really happy, though, that the last two years, our kindergarten numbers have gone up. This year we have 717 kindergartners enrolled with us, and I think one of the things we should bring up is we have a really small senior class that's leaving, and then having a larger kindergarten class, we hope that trend continues, that, um, we continue to have large kindergarten classes. Dave is much smarter than I am when it comes to the predictions and birth rates, and he looks at all of that much more, has much more knowledge about that than I do. But those, those are some good things that are going on. So, you wanna do this part? Let me do it. So we asked, so we asked, Dr. Morello said, what do we do from here? And again, I'm gonna emphasize the idea, we need to get our own students who live in our district back to us, or we need to get them to stay with us. So the efforts that have put in, been put in really in the last year, with the see-for-yourself and more campaigns, and then you look at all of the great things that we have going on the district with early college academy, career and technical education opportunities, preschool and kindergarten recruiting and retention, Head Start that we're working on, those are all things to get people to come and see for themselves and stay with us. At this time, I would open it up to any questions that you have.
Just curious, do you have data on the total number of potential kindergartners in our city or whatever?
Yeah, what we do is we calculate a ratio from the Potawatomi County birth rate. Birth rates are published in Iowa by county only. We have a long, over 40 years of data on, on birth rates and then the resulting kindergarten classes, and we enroll in council bluff schools about 58% of the live births from five years before. So, and, and that ranges any year from, you know, 56 to 59 and a half percent or something like that, but it's, it's a pretty stable number, right, in that 58%. So based on that, we're looking at another kindergarten class over 700 next year. Our prediction, uh, based on birth rate five years ago is 707, and our variance on that is three or four percent, or either way, typically either year, every year.
So between our district and the little central district, we'd have a high percentage of the kindergarten kids.
Yeah, we're, we're over 80% in Pot County, between those two school districts.
Okay.
And have we started, uh, with any sort of, um, projections for the construction along the, uh, River's Edge area? They've talked about that being eventually, was it, it was a crazy number, 4,000 extra units or something like that?
What I'm concerned about is it will be young professionals, those that haven't started families yet. And, um, we were at a meeting, Diane and I, where they were talking about, um, the construction and the, uh, freeway and the work that was coming through, and they're supposed to really be connecting something into 480 to really make access to council bluffs even, uh, more attractive and, and easy to enter and get to the River Edge. But to do that, they will have to take some homes, and, uh, the law states that they must re, uh, be able to replace them in another home in the same school district. And what was stated was they're struggling to find homes to replace or to provide for the families, that they're taking the homes for this construction. And, um, one thing, uh, Tim or Dave, if you would go back to the birth rate, or the kindergarten, um, the red dot, the reason we started with that year is that is our seniors graduating this year. This is the smallest senior class we've had in a while, um, and you can tell.
They have been a small cohort from, from the first year they started in kindergarten, they, they've been a small cohort all the way through.
And so when we looked at it, like, we look like 20 years of it, and it just looked like up and down and up and down, and, and one thing I know that the chamber is working on, our mayor is working on, is affordable housing and, and more housing for our families in this area, uh, because right now, there's just not a lot of homes. I was talking about, someone was talking about hiring doctors for one of the hospitals, and they hired 10, and only two of the 10 could find a home in council bluffs. The other 10 ended up back over in Omaha and was driving across. So, I know that a home, being able to provide that, and our families being able to find homes to live in, to grow our enrollment, but the one piece that we've talked about, instead of focusing on new homes or, you know, or having more families move in, is retain the students and the families that we have. Because currently, we lose almost 500 students to another district or to other districts. And so, being able to provide them with opportunities that they really, to increase our achievement levels and our extracurricular activities, that's what keeps families here. And that's something that we've got to do. So, I was really pleased with the kindergarten numbers and the work that was done by our administrators and our communications department. I think our parents really felt like we wanted them to be here. And now, it's our job to do a really good, quality job of educating their kids and staying connected with them.
Yeah, open enrollment in number, that 280?
65.
65 number. Do we know on that, was that, I know we had initially had some growth through the College View? I mean, is this, do we have an idea what this, whether they're here for certain services we have? Have we looked into that?
Did you pull that, Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, when, I don't think we provided that in the packet, but when we looked at that, when we've been, we've been talking about this forever, really, right? So, when we looked at that, we know College View has a large group of kids that come. Makes sense, it's the closest to Trainer and to Little Central. But really, when you look at all the schools, they open enroll in, a lot of them are kids who have experiences in Council Bluffs and want to stay if they move. We have a very high mobility rate within our kids. Or they've just had parents come to the school. It's really hard to narrow in on why they're choosing to come to, well, every school has kids that are open enrolled into it.
Maybe that's something you can provide in Friday packet? That'd be great. We'll get some more detail for you on that.
I'm wondering, I guess I always wonder, are there school districts where we know where they've done a really good job of addressing this dilemma? You know, or diving into it, and, you know, is it additional staff to reach out to students to retain, reach out to families to retain? Is it services we need, or are you not providing?
And we did put a lot of effort into, we're turning in open enrollment applications to leave. We had administrators calling them, we were, Robin, my secretary, was doing a great job of calling them to say, hey, you don't have any experience, why don't you come and look at the school, your neighborhood schools? So, we did, worked really hard to call them and sent letters to the ones at transition grades, because again, if you're going to get them to come back, if they're transitioning anyway, is the time to do it.
I think another thing that we did that was really, really helpful, that Diane facilitated for us, was allowing parents to come in for the schools and bring their students. I know that we had a middle schooler that Ms. Newman worked really hard with the family to get them to feel comfortable, and that student did transfer back over into our district. She was in our district, transferred to another, was at the middle school level, and because of some of the opportunities that we had, they transferred her back to Kern. So, we provided those, and we'll continue to do all of those, everything that we can think of, to ensure we retain and hopefully, open the door for others to wanna choose to return.
So, do we know where most of these kids that are actually enrolling out, like, where they end up actually going?
Yeah, we know where every single one of them ends up.
Yes, we have.
And if you're interested in that data, we can do tallies by district for you, if you were...
We can put that in a Friday note.
Yeah, we absolutely can do that. So, one would be a scatter plot of kids coming in, where are they coming in from? And then, in reverse, just a tally of school districts who receive our open enrollment and tuition out students. Okay?
We definitely looked at that report. Mr. Wilson was like, where are these students going? And Mr. Fringer did provide that for us, and it was a really great conversation for the cabinet to have, to look at that.
Do we see more of students, kindergarten students, open enrolling out? Or is it more at a certain grade level, or once they reach junior high?
Usually, it's, usually, you get them at three grade levels, kindergarten, so they're going to another district, both ways, actually. So, they're either coming to us or going to another district, and then they're transition grades. So, they've stayed for elementary, now they're going to middle school, they transition out or back in or high school. So, it's really those three areas are our largest areas.
Have we got any more data on the Crescent folks? Big discussion whether those kids were coming to, or easing that transition into Kern for kids used to small schools? Have we heard any more feedback on that lately?
Be hosting nights for our parents, and we had really good feedback. Ms. Newman did a really nice job to host and give them and provide them opportunity to tour the building, and no complaints, so I assume that went really, really well. And we did increase our enrollment out there by a little over 10% this year, and continuing to have those meetings with the community. They meet monthly, and our Director of Elementary Education and Director of Preschool also meets out there at Crescent with the committee, to continue to grow Crescent.
Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you. Mr. Cozard, that completes our report for the evening.
One thing I failed to do during our student achievement portion during the American Education Week recognition is to acknowledge the items that we have in front of us. Each one of the board members received a basket that principals and staff members of the district provided for us in appreciation for the work that we do on the board for the district. And we want to thank those staff members and principals that presented these items to us. We really appreciate that, that it makes it all worth it, to know that other people recognize the good work that this board has done through the years. One other thing that I failed to do during that recognition was recognize Mr. Arthur for his leadership these last few years as board president. So, at this time, Mr. Arthur, would you please join me? In recognition of the work that you have done as vice president for two years in 2014-16 and president from 2016 to 2018, I want to extend the appreciation from the board by giving you this engraved gavel, showing your years of service as board president. So, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for all of your work. And if you would remember, Mr. Arthur was very instrumental in bringing Dr. Murillo to us. He led us through that process of the search process and then also the hiring. So, this is one of those tasks that was led exemplarly by Mr. Arthur, and we want to appreciate and send our appreciation. So, now that we're back, so now that we're back on track, we have a resolution before us regarding the, if you recall, the Head Start grant application that must be approved by the board before it may be submitted. So, do we have a resolution regarding the Head Start grant application?
I'll read this motion here.
Yes.
Move that the Council Bluff Community School District recognized collaborated with an external grant writer, consultant, and/or contractor in the development of the Head Start grant application submitted in response to the funding opportunity announcement by the Office of Head Start. Further, the governing board of the Council Bluff Community School District actively participated in the content development and commitments included in the applicant's proposal. In addition, the Council Bluff Community School District, its governing board, and proposed Head Start and/or early Head Start management staff are fully knowledgeable of the Head Start regulatory requirements.
We have a motion to approve this application. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can you translate that into English? What's this all mean? There's something new.
Let me invite Dr. Vortman to the podium to discuss this. This is, anytime you have a grant, a large grant for the federal government, they expect us to ensure that our board is aware of the grant and the compliance piece that goes along with the grant, and it has to be approved before we can submit the grant. So, Dr. Vortman?
Yeah, this motion specifically tonight is language that is required by the Office of Head Start. Anytime there's an external grant writer, so that a grant writer doesn't rogue, go out and write a grant on behalf of someone and then subject them to the requirements of the grant without their approval. So, this is language that our grant writer has asked us to have our board approve, and then they send this, we'll send the minutes in with our grant application to the Office of Head Start, so that they know, one, you know that we hired a grant writer, two, we showed you the early drafts of the grant, and three, you approve of us using the grant should we be awarded the grant. That's, and it's very specific language for that reason.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cozard, I wanted to see if I could add something on. To ensure that the board knew that we had decided, instead of partnering with...
With Central Community Action.
That we would apply for a portion of that grant to administer ourselves.
I remember, I was talking about that. But is this a requirement only for Head Start grants or other federal grants? Or is this something new?
This is required for any federal grants that you use an external grant writer for.
Oh. So, if we do our own writing?
Then it's not necessary.
We're just detesting that we're knowledgeable, that there's a third party writing the grant.
That a third party didn't go out without your permission and subject you to the requirements of the grant.
So, that $9.9 million of federal grant money we got last year was all on our own?
Correct.
We didn't have this before.
That's correct.
I do feel that the state office objects us to their...
Thank you for clearing that up.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll move to the vote. Before us now is a resolution to approve the Head Start grant application. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Cozard?
Yes. And the motion to approve the Head Start grant application attestation has been approved. With that, our business is completed, and we are adjourned.